All right, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the meeting in the Buchanan City Council to order. It's seven o'clock as it always is. We start off with a moment of silent prayer meditation and the pledge of allegiance. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone to the Buchanan City Council. As always, it's awesome to see all the faces here looking at city business and wondering what your council's up to. And we have quite the agenda tonight. It's going to be quite an informative night for us, so I'm looking forward to getting started with that. Under recognized guests, we have none, and I don't see anyone signed up to speak, so we're going to go straight right into it. Don't distract me, Ron.
I'm sorry.
We're going to go straight into department and board reports. I will tell you that Tom Lennis and Kelly Arnold and Tim Rock can scratch off. They have things come up, and so we relieve them or have given them relief for tonight. We're going to start out with Mr. Doss, our city administrator, with the financial report and of course, our five-year financial plan. Mr. Doss, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Well, tonight I have a five-year financial plan I want to go over with you. It's been, oh gosh, four years since we produced our three-year financial plan when I first started. And throughout that time, we've been capable of and able to enact some of the things that were in the three-year financial plan. And I think part of that is attributed to where we're at today and in the financial condition that we're in at this time. So about probably two, three months ago, Mary Edwards asked me to create a five-year financial plan, kind of as a guidance, if you will, or a tool that the city can use in future fiscal years to kind of assure that we maintain a good financial stability. So that's what you're going to see tonight. Everything that you see tonight is based on conservative numbers, extremely conservative numbers. So I want to let you know that first off. Also, a lot of the things I'm recommending are just recommendations. They are for council or future councils to make determinations of if that's the route they want to go. But we wanted to present some alternatives and some ideas and thoughts for council and also the public to consider moving forward in this financial plan. First, just a brief introduction. The city of Buchanan has an important responsibility to its citizens to carefully account for public funds, to manage its finances wisely, and plan for the adequate funding of services desired by the public, including the provisions and maintenance of public facilities. In these times, tight budgets, major changes in federal and state policies towards local government, and of limited growth in the city's tax base, the city needs to ensure that it is capable of adequately funding and providing those government services desired by the community. Ultimately, the city's reputation and success will depend on the public's awareness and acceptability of the management and delivery of these essential services. There are sound principles and guidelines of financial management which are intended to foster and support the continued financial strength and stability of the city of Buchanan as reflected in these financial goals I'm about ready to present. The city financial goals are broad, fairly timeless statements of the financial position of the city in which it seeks to attain. The first financial goal is to deliver quality services in an affordable, efficient, and cost-effective basis, providing full value for each tax dollar. The second is to maintain an adequate financial base to sustain a sufficient level of municipal services, thereby preserving the quality of life in the city of Buchanan. The third goal is to have the ability to withstand local and regional economic fluctuations, to adjust the changes in service requirements of our community, and to respond to the changes in federal and state priorities and funding as they affect residents. And finally, the final goal is to maintain a high bond credit rating to ensure the city's access to the bond markets and provide assurances to city taxpayers that the city government is well-managed and financially sound. Following these principles will enhance the city's financial health as well as its image and credibility with its citizens, the public in general, and bond rating agencies and investors. To achieve these purposes, as the city of Buchanan continues to grow and develop, it is important to regularly engage in the process of financial planning. It is this statement which establishes the five-year financial plan moving forward for the city of Buchanan. The city of Buchanan should maintain a prudent level of financial resources and try to protect against reducing service levels and only exploring taxes and fees in moderation and necessary because of temporary revenue shortfalls, unpredicted one-time expenditures, or emergency situations. What we're going to start off with now is the financial plan overview a little bit. I want to let you know that this financial plan is issued by myself, city administrator and treasurer of the city of Buchanan. It is for fiscal years 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020. The purpose of the five-year financial plan is to enable the city to expand the focus of its fiscal decision-making from one-year horizon provided by the annual budget process to a multi-year horizon. This will allow for more extensive deliberations to the impact of policy options the city may consider. While technically less detailed and complicated than the annual budget, the financial plan provides the basis for identifying and quantifying the implementations of a budget decision and the economic realities by the city. Utilization of a multi-year financial plan process is an important component in continuing to maintain the city's economic health. The plan aids city council in preparing the next budget proposal and also provides a sense of the economic outlook for additional years beyond the budget year. This is the financial plan outline. There are essentially four sections that we're going to talk about tonight. Those sections are, kind of skipping over a little. Section one, our general fund revenues. Section two, general fund expenditures. Section three is just a general fund summary. And section, section, section four, our general fund, five-year capital improvement plans. God, that's going to be on.
We got that.
I will not. Section number one, general fund revenues. We'll tell you that general fund revenues, general fund revenues are expected to grow at an average of 1% over the next five years. Okay, and we're going to talk about things that we can do to increase those, all right? The findings in this financial plan first are the business and occupation tax. This is the city's primary source of revenue. It represents about 51% of all general revenue receipts. Okay, let that sink in a little bit. The business and occupation tax should be expected to hold a steady average increase of approximately 1.3%. So that means in these next five years, we're expecting that our business and occupation tax will bring in about 1.3%. Here are some recommendations, and I'm going to be honest with you. Some of these recommendations might be a little tough to handle, but it's all part of the plan. And again, it's up for councils to make this determination. I'm stating within the financial plan by fiscal year 2018, 2019, the city should consider eliminating the BNO tax on manufacturing. This would create a revenue decrease of approximately $108,000 annually. This would enable the potential for attracting industrial and commercial manufacturing economic development. These are essentially the good-paying jobs. These are also the most difficult jobs to attract because every municipality wants these. Okay, but we feel that by eliminating the manufacturing tax, this would act as an economic driver and would put us competitive with other municipalities that are actually quite honestly doing the same thing. But it is going to cost us, okay? We're reducing a tax, reducing a BNO tax. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that we will be losing revenue with that. Next slide, please. Here's the alternative. By fiscal year 2018, 2019, and in conjunction with the elimination of the BNO tax on manufacturing, the city should adopt a 1% sales tax. The sales tax would be consumer-driven and would conservatively provide an additional $500,000 in revenue. If the sales tax is implemented, the city could focus on additional revenue only for infrastructure projects such as street paving, curb and gutter, sidewalks, and items centered around improvements in the quality of life for its citizens. Okay, this sales tax would also be in addition to the retail wholesale BNO tax that we currently have. We would not be changing our million-dollar exemption or the two-tiered structure, but this would be adding an additional sales tax. And moving forward, before we get to the next slide, it's okay. It's important to note that if council decides to go down this route, we need to have a plan in place of how we're going to spend that money and how we're going to sell that to our citizens, okay? So I would advise council in the future to not look at pay increases or those items, but look at tangible items that can increase our infrastructure and our streets and also add to the quality of life of the community. The second item findings is under our ad valorem tax. This is the city's largest second revenue source and represents 28% of all general revenue receipts. Increases in this component typically occur due to comprehensive reappraisals of your property. My findings of the property tax assessment will continue to increase slightly, but due to reflect an increase of approximately 1% in ad valorem tax increase fiscal year. We're saying it's going to increase by about 1%. And a lot of this is honestly attributed to the assessed values of properties and construction projects that have been occurring in the city over the last couple of years. And as those projects go online and increase in value, those assessments should go up a little bit, but not terribly significant. The hotel motel tax. The city collects a hotel motel tax and splits that revenue 70% to the Convention and Visitors Bureau and 30% to the Consolidated Public Works for beautification projects and aesthetic improvements. The hotel motel tax is expected to stabilize the next five years. But as a cautionary note, this may reflect a downturn as the completion of the major gas pipelines and cyclical market of the oil and gas industry. So there is potential that as that pipeline is being completed, some of those gas jobs, which actually are a major contributor every night within the corporate limits of Buchanan, you may see that start to dissipate a little bit, so there may be a little bit of a down revenue in that. The next item, our police and fire fees. We've already mentioned our fire fees. We should continue to make sure that those fees are supporting the fire department. And we'll note that police and fire fees collected by the city fund a portion of the operating expenses for both departments. These fees are currently at 8% for the police department and 20% for the fire department. 20% represents the increase in the fire fees that council approved a few months ago. 8%, we did not change the fees for the police department. So only 8% of the police department's entire budget is covered by fees. And quite honestly, that needs to change. That needs to change. We need to at least be up close to the 20% that the fire department is now bringing in top of their budget. These are recommendations. The fiscal year 2016, 17, that's the next fiscal year, you all will be considering the budget in March. A recommended increase in police fees will provide a substantial increase of double the existing revenue for those respective departments. This revenue would increase the fee similar to the recent fee posed and implemented by the fire department and would allow for a constant revenue stream and less reliance on revenue intake from the BNO. Fee would enable the police department to allocate additional resources for personnel and capital equipment purchases. If modeled after the recently revised fire fee, this revenue would generate approximately, conservatively, an additional $100,000 for the department. It's important to note this. These fees, when you see that it's only 8% of the department, that department has to be made up. The other 92% have to be made up by other taxes and other things collected by the city. And what that does is that puts a burden on general fund, it puts a burden on our BNO taxes in particular or ad valorem, because they have to make up that difference in the cost of providing the service for the police department, like every other department, that goes up every year, just the cost of doing business. The more we have to rely on our BNO and our ad valorem property tax, the less opportunities we have to do other acquisitions and other improvements in the town like street projects and like other things that would enhance our quality of life. So this adding a police fee and increasing the police fee would actually help to offset some of those costs. And of course, for the chief, it would give you a little bit more of a steady revenue and you wouldn't be as dependent upon the BNO and the market as that is determined. And again, that's a recommendation for fiscal year 2016, 17. Other management notes. Fund balance is an important indicator of the city's financial position. Maintaining reserves is considered a prudent management practice. Adequate fund balances are maintained to allow the city to continue providing services to the community in case of unexpected emergencies or requirements and/or economic downturns. It is prudent to adopt a financial policy associated with maintaining a strong municipal stabilization fund. We sometimes reference that as the rainy day fund for emergency budget purposes. The city of Buchanan should move to an annual increase in the budget allocation of $25,000 to $50,000 annually to the municipal stabilization fund. The state of West Virginia allows for a maximum of 30% of the original general fund budget to be set aside for rainy day. It would be acceptable, council, to realize a goal of 20% to 25% or $1 million over a period of 10 years. Currently, the city has $551,000 for approximately 13% of our entire general fund budget, and we can go to 30. Okay, so we're halfway, we're less than halfway there. Any use of the municipal stabilization fund should be approved by city council and include a repayment plan. It's important that if we have to borrow or we have to utilize our rainy day fund, that we have a plan in place to pay that back, okay? Based on a multi-year financial projection, that plan to restore the reserve to another 20% to 25% level within three fiscal years following the year in which that event occurred. So essentially what I'm saying is if we have to borrow against that rainy day fund, within three years, we should be able to at least pay 20% to 25% of that borrowed debt. Funds in excess of the reserves described above will be assigned to the unassigned general fund balance unless otherwise assigned in accordance with Gatsby Statement 54, and I'm not going to bore you with that. The next slide. And I know this is terrible. Now, we'll tell you this, council, you will be getting a financial report for your review and consideration and adoption at the next council meeting. But basically, what I did was I played this conservative. I'm saying over the next five years, our balance on hand, this is what we will end the year, begin the year with, will be $600,000, okay? And I put that across the board. That is a very conservative number. From all indications, we have over $1 million this fiscal year, okay? But again, we're dealing with uncertainties, so we try to project low. As you can see, our revenues, it's not a steady increase. Again, it's a little around 1%. And then when you take our revenues and our balance on hand, the actual money that we appropriate for our general fund budget, you can see that item. Again, it came in blurry, so I apologize, but again, you all will have a copy of that. But that's basically just showing you what my revenue projections are. We do not do any of the stuff that I'm recommending tonight. This is basically the course that you're going to have as far as revenues I'm predicting over the next five years, okay? That's if we don't do anything. Section two. Section two, our general fund expenditures. Assumption. General fund expenditures are expected to grow at an average of 2.2% over the next five years. So if I'm telling you revenues are going to increase by 1% and expenditures are going to increase by 2.2%, it's not a good thing, right? So we need to make sure that we look at our expenditures and we look at exactly where we're going as a municipality. Inflationary costs associated with materials, equipment, and other operational expenses associated with the decline in the economic market justify the increase impacting all departments within the city of Buchanan. And these are my findings, and this is where it also gets interesting. Next slide, please. Economic development. It remains vitally important that the city continues to explore options and incentives to retain and attract new business capital to the city. Annually, at least $10,000 should be appropriated to assist with the promotion of downtown business development. These funds would be utilized to assist with facade improvements and attracting and retaining commercial businesses. By fiscal year 2019, 2020, the city should eliminate all contributions to the Upsher County Development Authority. During this three-year period leading up to this dissolution of public funds, the Upsher County Development Authority should explore funding that will make its entity self-supported. This would provide an annual expenditure savings of $15,000 to $25,000. Okay, let that sink in a little bit. The Upsher County Development Authority was first started, their charge was basically to be self-supported and self-funding and not rely on county or municipal government funds to support them. We haven't quite made that. My fear is with the county, the county revenues are a lot more limited than what we have and with the dissolving of essentially coal tax money, which is a huge fund as far as the county is concerned, not as much with the city, and the loss of those revenues, I think the county's going to have to make some painful decisions. And if the county is anything like they did a few years ago, they pulled out a lot of funding for economic development and the city was approached to increase and step up their funding to offset that. So we have to be cognizant of that as well. The city of Buchanan should also include exploring incentives such as incremental tax abatement based on capital investments and job creation and expansion associated with the business and occupation tax to attract both industrial and commercial to the area. When we get into departmental expenditures. Departmental expenditures continue to increase along the lines of typical inflationary rate with a few exceptions. Employee compensation. Employee compensation should be evaluated and designated based on the ratio of revenue to expenditures realized at the beginning and at the end and the beginning of each fiscal year. When necessary, the city should provide compensation based on a flat cost of living rather than a percentage basis. An alternative to salary increases might be the implementation of longevity pay. Ron loves that. Longevity pay is not a bonus, but it does recognize employee service. A structured longevity scale in lieu of salary increases could be an option that would provide a one-time compensation, again, on an annual basis and based off of their service.
Is this up to date? The slide, is it up?
Yes. Oh, 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 as we get, yeah, I'm sorry. Flip to the next slide, please. Okay, health insurance expenses. These are some alarming figures that we're going to give you. Health insurance is expected and projected to continually see an increase over the next five-year projection. The rising cost of healthcare and increasing age of our existing employees will impact the annual premium. The city should continue to monitor health insurance premiums while still providing adequate quality health coverage for its employees. Calculations based on current coverage and the expectation that several major claims will be incurred by the city will increase annual premiums. It is projected that next fiscal year, next budget session, I will be paying a premium around $946,560. That will go up in the next fiscal year to $974,956. In the third year, we'll reach the million-dollar mark, $1,4,205. Year after that, year four, $1,034,331. And finally, in year five, the end of this financial plan, health insurance expenditures are expected to go up to $1,065,361. I do want to note this. That is health insurance for all employees. That does not just include general fund. Okay, so we're talking about all of our enterprises as well. We're talking about water, sewer, trash, and even consolidated public works now, okay? But it's a decision that council makes that impacts all employees. And it's a decision that all departments, general fund departments, as well as enterprise departments, utility departments, will have to burden, okay? Council should also consider a hard spending cap for health insurance premiums. Next slide, please. For employee pensions. Due to historical trends with state employment, it is projected that employer contributions will continue at a rate of either 14% to 15.5% over a five-year period. The employee's contribution will continue at a rate of 4% to 5%. Okay, so we're looking at employer, that's the city of Buchanan, paying a contribution of between 14% and 15.5% and the employee, our staff, pay at a rate of 4% to 5%. I think really this trend, I believe in this trend, and I'll tell you why. I think as a lot of, a lot of folks are retiring. We have a large group of retiring employees ourselves and also state employees. I think there's going to continue to be a gap in employee pensions. And the state of West Virginia is going to have to make that up somehow. And I think they're going to go back on the employer, and I also think they're going to go back on the employee as well. So I know we're 14% now, but I would not be surprised if we're at 15.5% or maybe even more by the time this plan is up for revision in 2021. Next slide. Under personnel, the city should continue maintaining a current hiring freeze for all positions not previously budgeted in 2016, 2017. That's next year's budget. I think after next year's budget, the city should strongly look at a hiring freeze. Elimination and assessment of vacated positions should be determined based on necessity subsequent to retirement and attrition. Basically, what this is saying is as we lose employees, we need to evaluate those positions. Whether we lose those employees through retirement, resignation, or they leave for another job, we need to seriously take a strong look at those positions to see if they need to be filled. Next slide, please. Infrastructure. The city must stay committed to providing improvements to existing street infrastructure and enhancing city buildings. This five-year plan calls for significant increases in expenditures for street paving, capital projects, and the construction of the city of Buchanan's public safety complex. We still have work we have to do on that complex, that's why I left that in there. Increases in the street department budget by 5% are recommended with earmarked appropriations for street paving improvements in the amount of no less than $125,000 for each of these five coming years, no less than $125,000 for street projects. These funds will assure that the city continues to maintain and improve the 25 miles of streets within Buchanan. Previously mentioned in the revenue section, BNO taxes collected from contractors should continue to be earmarked specifically to this line and assist with street infrastructure improvements. During fiscal year 2016, 17, that's next fiscal year, the city should move to establish a stormwater board and department. The city should move to establish a stormwater board and storm department. During fiscal year 2016, 2017, that's next fiscal year, the city should establish a flat storm fee for both residents and commercial businesses and a comprehensive fee by fiscal year 2021. This would eliminate the annual expenditure of $100,000 that general fund makes, which could be re-appropriated for other purposes within general fund. This would also commit a steady revenue stream which would enhance the city's ability to actively address stormwater issues. We all know we have issues every time it rains. Sam Ludlow and Tim Rock presented back in the summer, if you will recall, that in 25 years, the city of Buchanan, you all in general fund as council members, have spent $1.5 million in 25 years, $1.5 million on stormwater projects, and they made a significant difference. If we go with a storm fee, establish a storm department, and Mr. McClure is familiar with that with the city of Huntington, we would basically bring in at least $100,000. It took us 25 years to do $1.5 million. It would take us 15 years to equal that. So we would do less time with the investment if we had a storm fee. Next slide. But additional financial management notes. It should be noted that as a financial management method of offsetting rising expenditures, the city may elect to consider reducing each department budget by approximately 2.5% for each fiscal year. This step would assist the city of Buchanan in curbing and controlling some of the inflationary expenditure items and providing more temporary but stable revenue over expense fiscal outcome during the three, well, it should be five-year period. Next slide, please. Okay, you're not, again, not going to be able to see this very detail, but this is basically an expenditure forecast for all of the departments that account within general fund. fund. Again, this is at a rate of two point five percent. And again, if you'll notice, I kept economic development in there at fifteen percent. Again, a lot of these recommendations will change some of these things, you know, the implementation of the sales tax, a storm fee, the dissolution of contributions to economic development, you know, will change those. But right now, we're only talking about the course that we are on as we sit here today in this meeting. Excuse me, number three. Next slide. Section three, general fund summary. A detailed revenue and expenditure line-by-line analysis has been included in Appendix A, and you will get this in your report, outlining each individual revenue and department operating expense. These projected assumptions are based on previous actual year totals and current trends within the City of Buchanan's general fund for this budget year 2015, 2016. The five-year financial plan recommends increasing funding expenditures for capital projects, street improvements, and does consider minimal compensation and benefits for full-time Section four, general fund, five-year capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is a five-year project planning tool. All of our departments, when they're in general fund, Chief Gregory just did that today in revising his, all of our departments do, have them do a five-year capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan provides the City of Buchanan with a financial monitoring tool for all capital projects. As long-range plan, it reflects the city's budgetary approach regarding long-range fiscal and economic development. The plan provides for valuable information to the city council, which facilitates the capital investment decision-making process. As with any long-range planning efforts, changes will be required as departmental goals and objectives are refined, unanticipated needs arise, priorities change, revenue expectations may fall short, projections may improve, incorrect or emergencies could develop, which will require further refinement. For this reason, capital improvement plans are subject to reassessment on an annual basis. And all of our departments in the next budgetary year always are constantly updating and reassessing their capital improvement plans. If they cannot make an acquisition, say, next year, they may bump it to the year after that, but it gives them a tool to let them know that that piece of equipment or that vehicle or that item still needs to be considered somewhere, somewhere down the line in outgoing years. It should be emphasized that the capital improvement plan is formulated based on best data available at the time. Proposed expenditures must meet the criteria of making services provided by the city more efficient and effective while being financially feasible. Generally, a typical item in the capital improvement plan would be equipment or vehicle purchases, construction of facilities, or infrastructure improvements. Expenditures are normally five thousand or higher, and these projects represent a significant contribution to the city's overall inventory of physical assets. Also included in this, when you get your plan, will be the chief, the police department's capital improvement plan, the fire department's capital improvement plan, and the street department's capital improvement plan, and you'll be able to see in your packet the five years and what expenditures for these particular items that they're requesting. And that, again, helps us because a lot of our major expenses, aside from just the average operations, you know, salary and benefits and general maintenance, the other piece of that pot, that large chunk, is in our capital improvements and our acquisitions of equipment, vehicles, and our work on our facilities. So you will be getting a copy of that. Well, to join us, but that is, that concludes my report.
Mr. Dawson, I can't tell you, as we've worked together the last couple of months discussing this, and you pulled that presentation all the way up, you did a fine job, and I appreciate all the work you've done on it. You hit most of the spots I asked for and some of your own, you were awesome. Counsel, I'll open up the floor to questions and comments from Michael on his presentation. Mr. Thomas?
Pickle on me. I applaud the, this whole process, Michael, and the way I view it, it's a much-needed dialogue that the city really needs to consider very seriously. I don't necessarily agree with everything you've presented, but I do think it's a wonderful start. For those of us who were at the town hall meeting about a month ago, Keith Buchanan, I think, made some very astute observations. He said that if you increase your revenues, the citizens may not be that concerned about it if they saw that the revenue enhancement is going to really enhance and increase the quality of life for the citizens. I think that's really a very, very keen observation that Keith made. I have advocated for a long time that we reconsider the BNO tax and have a comprehensive rather than the kind of structure we have now. You know, I don't think it's a, one of those issues that have to be dealt with over the next three months or six months or what have you, but part of that process may be that, you know, you talked about the elimination of the BNO for manufacturing, you know, what if we did, instead of having the one million dollar exemption, have one and a half million dollars or two million, if you're looking at a, a sales tax. Keith made the observation also, it seemed to him that we tend to look at the business segments rather than looking at all of us that are benefiting from the services. So you addressed that with the police fee increase potentially, there may be the storm fee, maybe we should have a street fee, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's a real wonderful dialogue. I've also advocated that we give serious consideration to the students that live over in the residency at the college. Many college universities are advocating a student fee to support the services that they receive. You know, you're a financial analyst, you're very analytical, and you've got a lot of people that are benefiting that reside over on the campus that basically don't pay any kind of user fee. That ought to be discussed at least. If you look at the growth of our community in the last five to ten years, it's not that many businesses, but it's the government, the county government, the city government, the social services, the hospital, the college, the school system, none of them pay BNO tax. They're exempted. So we have to look at what alternatives are out there. I, I would suggest that in some ways, as people that are sitting up here that are elected, there are some hot potato issues out there, or hot button, so to speak. I think it might be interesting to have a special committee, ad hoc committee, to take a look at all these kind of recommendations and others that might be out there. I would include, I suggested this six months ago, and, you know, looking at businesses, participate, have some of those people involved in the process, have somebody from the college, somebody from the hospital, all the different organizations, don't make it too large, but there are a lot of issues that you bring up that we need to consider. On the state level, I worry a lot about the retirement, because people are retiring. We have a wonderful retirement plan, but it's got to be paid for. And one of the things I'm concerned about, I've said before, the state could come along and say, hey, you're going to have to pay eighteen percent now. That's sort of scary. And, you know, I think it's important for our employees to realize they have a phenomenal retirement plan. I think it's wonderful. I wish there were more employers that were doing what we were doing in the county and so forth, but there's an expense to that. So I don't want to say much more. I think it's a great start, it's a great dialogue, and I would suggest that, you know, in your position, you see all the inflows and outflows of monies. I think, you know, I would like to participate on a committee like that, or, you know, just talk like we're doing today and say, hey, you know, maybe we need to pay a little bit more for police protection. Maybe the person that owns a five thousand square foot house should pay a higher fire fee than somebody that lives in a one thousand square foot house. Maybe the county needs to get on the scenario where they only pay, I believe, twenty-five dollars for living outside the county for fire. But we, as a city, provide a lot of services to the county in regard to fire protection. They also, I understand, have volunteers, but are a lot fewer volunteers than there were twenty years ago. So this is a great start. I really voiced what the mayor said, you really looked at this, and you're throwing up some things that people are going to say, oh, my gosh, you know, what's Dawson doing here? He's going to do things that just we can't imagine. But this is not a political thing, it's not a three-month or a six-month, it's a five-year plan, and, you know, this could all go out the window if somebody comes in and say, we're going to increase your health insurance by twenty percent. United Health just announced that they're probably going to get out of all the state plans for Obamacare, so that's going to have an impact on a lot of us. So I applaud you, thank you very much, and I hope to continue the discussion. I have very strong views on this, as most people know.
Dave, I want to, I want to answer something, because I know you and I have had conversations on a variety of things as far as how I've been here. I have access to BNO, so I know the growth of businesses.
Right.
I cannot, I cannot share that, but, but one thing I can tell you, and I know that we have talked, so I want to bring this up, and I think this might be a little eye-reel raise. When you take out the contractors, when you take out the financial institutions, and you take out the manufacturing, there are eighteen businesses, eighteen businesses in the City of Buchanan that pay BNO taxes. Ten of those businesses pay about one point five to one million dollars, and obviously a million or less, hard center. So ten out of those eighteen, one point five to one million dollars, so.
And I think, I think the citizens need to know that none of us sitting up here have access to that information. You know, that is only you, I think maybe the mayor.
Why do you have access?
But there's only like two or three people that have access to that. None of us that are sitting up here in council have any of that information. So I think, again, it's a, it's a, it's a great start, and I applaud you for doing it. One thing that CJ Rollins said in the town hall meeting also is, and I think all businesses are facing this today, unfortunately, we don't want the paperwork to have to be strangling the businesses. So, you know, if you go to a comprehensive, how many people are going to be affected by it? Maybe nobody will be affected by it if you go to a million and a half or two million. They still may have to do the paperwork. So I think we have to look at, that's why I think a special committee would be helpful, too. We need to know their position more than what we probably do now. So I'm looking forward to working with you, and, you know, I don't know if I'm going to run for council again, but I would be willing to work with you for as many years as you think it's going to be needed to have a viable financial plan for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any other comments? Tammy, anything?
I think Michael brought out some really good points. I don't necessarily agree with all of them either, but the thing is, we have to make sure that our citizens understand why we raise fees and what purpose it will be for. But this is everything we need to sit down as a council and go each one individually. David hit on everything, so I have nothing else to say.
Yeah, you pretty much comprehensive that, I've been there. Mr. Pugh?
Yeah, I was going to say everything that David said, so I'd be glad that I didn't get a chance to do that. I have one question, though, Michael. I'm wondering on an emergency fund or a rainy day fund or whatever you call it, one million dollars is not that much money. Like, we could be wiped out in one, one instant, right there with that. And, but I understand that we are restrained by constitution, by Charleston, as to how much we can have in that, in that fund. So we improve our revenues and get more.
Yeah, the state car put in by the state of West Virginia assures that municipalities can essentially port up tax dollars, that there is a threshold point where, you know, the citizens will cry out to spend that money as they should, so that's what they have to do.
Mr. Pugh, Mr. Simon.
Good job. Great presentation. I, I feel that as long as we have a big surplus, there's no need to raise taxes. And if we do, for some reason, raise fees or whatever, we need to document exactly what they're going to go for. For instance, a police fee would be doable as long as we add to our police force. So, but it was a great presentation, and I applaud you for it.
Mr. Simon.
Excellent, Michael. I like the fact that, that we're not here looking at year by year, that we're looking down the road. Whether half this council will be on here or not, it doesn't matter, and what matters is that you're looking at that picture and taking care of those things. And that's why you get paid the whole big bucks, I'm sure. But there was one thing, there was several things, and I made little questions and stuff, and I'm not going to hold up everybody here to ask this now, if I could, I'll come ask you personally. But stormwater board, that's another one that could wipe us out, just, just in repairs. That's a big issue. And the other, the other was the, there were a lot of things, but how long did it take you to do this?
Two, five minutes. A while, but I had to frame work from the three-year plan, so.
And is, is these are recommendations, your hiring freeze, when would that, if that would come for council and we would have to?
It's really, it's really just a practice that council would do, and again, I think it's a hiring freeze, but, but not in the purest sense that, you know, people leave absolutely no more coming in.
Right.
But I do think that there should be an evaluation process, and really, this just transcends just council. You all serve on, on utility boards, and honestly, this is something that I would drive home to our utility boards, too, is to take into some consideration of those individuals. As those individuals leave us, you know, we're not talking about taking someone and telling them tomorrow that they no longer have a job, but when that person elects to leave us on their, by their own accord, or through retirement, or through disciplinary action, we really should go back and look at that. Some, some of the departments, it seems, are a little overly saturated, to be quite honest with you, without naming, talking to you in private. But, you know, when you have a pie chart of all of the monies and all of the expenses that are brought into a department, any department, the biggest piece of that pie chart are personnel. And that's like that everywhere, that's like that everywhere. Salary benefits, everything, that's a big piece. The second largest piece is just the day-to-day operations, the cost of doing business. And the smallest piece of any pie chart, whether it's in a public organization or private organization, is their capital. That's, that's how they progress, that's how they advance, and it's the smallest chart. And when you look at that from a municipal government standpoint, that's the stuff we do to make our city better. That's the things we do to make improvements, and it's the smallest piece of the chart. It's always going to be the smallest piece of the chart, but sometimes, through some of these recommendations, we can ease that up a little bit. And I mean, I'm not grandstanding or apologizing, but we can return some of that money back to our citizens in the shape of providing better services and enhancing our services.
We always have the delineation between fixed costs and variable costs for any particular department, and so you can't make a blanket comment about fixing variable costs, because it depends on what the services are provided. You know, there are some segments that are high fixed costs in plant equipment and others that are high variable costs, but, you know, that's something that you're familiar with because you do with it on a day-to-day basis. But it's an excellent, excellent presentation, Mike, I appreciate it.
It really was. I am concerned, though, that because I know that somewhere in several departments, you know, we're losing a lot of years of knowledge and experience from people retiring, and Tim Rock's retiring. God help us if anybody on the order board goes right now, okay? But the street department, Lowell went last year, he had a lot of years' service, you know, and, and then we've got the ones that are there now that are moving, and other, in some departments that are moving up, that they're not far off, you know, within a five-year plan. You know, they're going to start looking at retirement, and it takes time and money to retrain.
And it takes time and money to retrain, you know? It does.
And do for them that they can retire and enjoy while they're left.
Yeah.
And part of the challenge every organization has is to be able to have people that are coming into that position to take over. Sometimes you can't...
I do want to stress something. I know I've mentioned it, the dirty word of civil tax. I'm sure that that will dominate the paper tomorrow, but I want to emphasize, if we go down that route, we will generate a pretty considerable revenue stream, but we don't need to take the approach of a Clarksburg. We don't need to, I'll call them out, the approach of Fairmont or any of the other places that are having that to offset, thank goodness, we don't have pensions, in a sense, that we have to cover, but a lot of those are using it to make up revenue, you know, revenue shortfalls and committed expenses. And I think we're better than that, and we need to take the route of, we get that revenue that we invested in things that our citizens expect from us and not do it because we have a shortfall in something and we're trying to offset mistakes of the past.
I like that.
Now, council here, I'm here to remind you of something, too. We asked Michael this because the three-year plan was up. I asked Michael about six months ago to take a look at the five-year plan. I said, actually said, three, five years. Here's what really needs to happen, and I disagree with the whole committee idea. I think, first of all, we should have a work session between council. First of all, get all the information. Michael's going to get you, digest your research and understand. Then we come together in a work session and take a look at what you do disagree with or what you might disagree with. We find the compromise. Then, we may want to have a town hall meeting or a committee that would take us to a town hall meeting for the citizens to be able to discuss as well what our plan would be for the next five years. I would warn against, we can give a recommendation to the next council of what we feel about our five-year plan should be, but we really can't make that five-year plan because we don't know if we're going to be there. But what we can have in place is what we would hope or anticipate that that next council as a majority would want to have as a five-year plan. If we do it right, we get the citizens involved in what Michael's given us, the city is going to be so far ahead by 2020, which is our comprehensive plan. And by then, hopefully, we will be somewhat nearer with the quarter H completion that I think Michael's progressive plan, I love the B and O idea, it's outside the box, we got enough complaining about it, why don't we compromise? There's a compromise for you. I don't actually mind not compromising on the 1.5 million exemption. But yeah, some people want to go and have a craziness about it. Again, thank you, Michael. I will say that I think we should have a working committee, a working session on this sometime in the next month. Please read the information you've got, so you come in and say, "Okay, here's what we understand and what we don't." And then we take it on to the citizens so that these citizens actually understand what we're talking about, because I bet this is a lot of jargon that may not make a whole lot of sense to a lot of people, but you need to know what we're doing with it and why we're doing it and how we're doing it. We'll take it to the people and do it, at least before the next elections, for sure.
Well, Mayor, one of the reasons I suggested the possibility of a special committee to bridge the election cycle so that you have continuity with people that are, I mean, we have a very involved citizens in especially the downtown area and so forth. And, you know, it's not necessarily we do that, but that's an opportunity maybe for involving the, none of us sitting up here have, you know, other than Pam really, has capital involved in the business community. And they look at things from a much different perspective than those of us that are not putting our own money into the system, so to speak.
Well, that makes sense, but I would also disagree with that.
Yeah, that's okay. That's why we're talking.
You know what? We are the committee. We were elected as citizens, and when you talk about hot potato items, that's why we decided to run for this position. And we have to take those hot potatoes, and we either have to put on some gloves and deal with it, or we get burned. You know, either way, at least we're doing something with the hot potato, which is now making me hungry. We want to be business-friendly. We do want to continue on with this. I appreciate your presentation, Michael. Really, really well done and really presented. So, I think we need to move on, though, to the next thing.
Well, a couple of things I do want to mention. Just as a side note, the North Spring Street parking lot, the lights are now on at the parking lot, so when you head out of here and go home, take a look at that. I think it's going to enhance people's abilities, hopefully, to stay a little bit more downtown until safe. And so, this parking lot, I'm sure the police appreciate having that. And I also want to apologize some more if the words slipped during the presentation. I've been hanging out with my floor too long.
Everybody up, Michael. Blame it on the attorney. There you go.
What did you say?
I got a good hold on this.
I'll tell you on the way home.
What do you have, yes, Mr. Pugh?
Question about lights. So, the lights on East Main Street, the old light's still on? And if they are, why? Because it's costing us money.
Old lights?
The old street lights on East Main.
Oh, damn, we just put the new lights.
We put the new lights. I've seen the old lights there.
They are still on. I will check with Jay and Jerry. I know that that's been brought, I think by Pam, you brought that up about a month or so ago, so I'll check on that.
I checked with Walmart, too. I've heard a lot of complaints about their light, that it's not, they're not working or something.
It's pitch dark in that parking lot. Can we put those lights on East Main Street in the city park since it's pitch-black dark, too?
The灯 lights in city park?
No, any lights in the city park.
We talked about doing that.
It's pitch-black dark. The pavilion's not even lit now.
Why don't we consider the East Main Street lights as an experiment at this point? Because there was a time when we were talking about the ones that are not lighting for students to get back and forth to Wesleyan. We doubled us a lot of these. Let's see if that makes it a lot safer for the students, and I think that is a great weapon for us to help Wesleyan College when their students have it for them. I don't see it as worth the money in that case. I think it's a safety.
All right, so we'll move on to Chief Gregory in the police department. Thank you very much, Mr. Dawson.
Waste of my... It really is.
I'll try to keep it about five minutes shorter than Michael.
How about ten minutes? Don't let your work...
I'm kidding.
That's it.
Just a couple of things. Now, one thing I want to announce, something I have announced every fall for a number of years now, but right around the end of September, we're always invited by the AAA that covers all of West Virginia and Western Pennsylvania to apply for their awards program focusing on safe highways. And the packet that we fill out and submit to them and have submitted to them for a number of years focuses on a wide variety of things that we, as the City of Buchanan Police Department, do, both in terms of enforcement activities as well as educational initiatives. We focus on everything from our traffic school that we've worked in conjunction with our city attorneys with. We focus on the seatbelt, occupant protection, safety, distracted driving. We focused on impaired driving throughout the year, and we've got a lot of success with those initiatives. And again, not only just focusing strictly on enforcement, but also our educational initiatives. We were able to offer a wide variety of programs and speak about highway safety on many fronts, whether it be in schools, whether it be at special events such as National Night Out, whether it be at special programs that we have within the city police department to include the Citizens Police Academy and the Youth Police Academy. We've had both this year. In fact, one of the initiatives, and this is just an example that we use in our report, in our youth academy, we had the ABCA bring their DUI simulator down and had the youth that were involved in our program go through the simulator to see what impairment does to a driver and how dangerous that is. And we're trying to instill that in the young mind to hopefully avoid that becoming a reality on down the road. So, that's just an example of some of the things that we do across the board. And we focus comprehensively on highway safety in this report. And when we submit it, we're eligible for a variety of awards, and they range anywhere from commendations all the way from bronze to silver to gold, and then ultimately platinum. And they base the level of award based on, one, your initiatives that you've taken in your community, two, not only recognize issues, highway safety issues, but how you can address them. And the criteria for the highest award, the platinum award, goes a little above and beyond that, to also focus on marked results. And we're very fortunate here in the city of Buchanan to have safe highways. We're very fortunate that the fatality rate isn't high. Consistently, year after year, we may have one or two, if any, fatalities on our roads. And a lot of that can be directly related back to our efforts, education, letting folks know that we do care, we do, we are aware of the issues, we do focus on those issues by a variety of initiatives, again, both educationally and through enforcement. So, I'm proud to say that this year, we were invited to the awards banquet, again, held in Bridgeport this year. And coincidentally, these awards are national awards. They're national-level awards. So, police departments throughout the United States who meet the various criteria that AAA sets forth for safe highways are eligible for these same awards, no matter how small or large the department is. It's a national award. And I'm very proud to say that, once again, we've been awarded the platinum-level award for highway safety in our communities. I think this is testament to the efforts of our officers who work tirelessly to keep our highways safe through enforcement and educational initiatives. This is the 12th year in a row that we have received this award. These are doing our conference room, if anybody's had the opportunity to come to our conference room. I know you've been there for the Citizens Academy. We had the academy in that class. It literally is on its second row in that office now, and I look forward to...
I'm going to use it.
This is number 12, and I look forward to filling that wall up and starting on another one. The next thing I'd like to advance tonight is the conversation concerning the pro officer. I know we've been talking about this for a while. I brought it up a couple, two, three months ago for your consideration. And we've had representatives from the Board of Education come and talk about the logistics and how it will work, the benefits of the program. We two share, as I've expressed before, the same sentiment in terms of the benefits of the program. And again, it goes right back to what I was talking about with safe roads. Not only focusing on the issues, but taking the time with our children and trying to reach out and really give the P in the pro officer, the preventative or prevention resource officer, really give it attention and focus on curbing juvenile delinquency, curbing the problems that kids often grow into as adults. If we can reach one or a handful, we're doing a remarkable job as a city. And that's what I believe this pro officer position can accomplish in our school. I know that this was an issue to be discussed at the town hall meeting. I wasn't able to attend that particular meeting. I was actually coaching a soccer game. I coach youth soccer and spend a lot of time with youth myself. And so, I was in Bridgeport, actually losing the only game we lost this season. So, that's all right. But, so I apologize for not being there. But I do want to, from my understanding, talking to Lieutenant Loudon, who was there, representing the department, talking to others in the community, it has been well-received. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from within the agency, from throughout the city as well, our residents, different interests of people, folks that have kids in school. It has seemed to have been well-received. And that being said, I do want to advance the conversation concerning the pro officer program tonight. I know that obviously we can't make a decision tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I would like to see us advance it to that point and really make this a reality. Now, obviously, as I've mentioned before, to make this a reality, we have selected Sergeant Stewart to be the pro officer should we choose to pursue this program. And with Sergeant Stewart leaving the field and going to the school for approximately 10 months out of the year, that brings our current existing services of nine officers, nine uniformed officers, including myself and Lieutenant Loudon as the administrators, we're still, we still take calls and serve the public. That brings our existing service of nine officers, as it stands right now, as of today, that brings us down to eight if Stewart leaves the field and goes to the school. Obviously, we believe in the program, as I've mentioned to you, I believe it has a lot of positive impact for the youth of our community. But we also believe in the level of service that we should be providing to our citizens in our community, not to mention the level of protection that we should be giving each other in the form of backup on calls. And I believe that, should we pursue the pro officer position, that I would also like to see a replacement officer hired to take Stewart's vacancy in the field. Now, granted, even though that brings our roster to 10 officers, absent the summer when Stewart gets to come back from the school and work with the city, which would definitely be a shot in the arm for the police department in terms of coverage, we're not increasing the field services. All we're asking with this program, if we move Stewart from the field to the school, is the ability to hire a patrolman to take his place and keep our existing services at nine officers. Over the years, we flirted with a number of different models concerning our manpower levels. When I first started with this agency in January of 1997, there were seven officers with the city, and there were, that was the way it was for a number of years. In fact, it was still that way when I took over as chief in November 2004, 11 years ago. And I worked with council at the time in 2007 to gradually bring that number up from seven to eight, to nine, and ultimately 10 officers in the field. And the sole driving force behind that was twofold. One, it was to give us more effective coverage on the schedule, to be able to spread the workload more evenly across the board instead of fewer officers shouldering the burden of causes and cases, to have at least 10 officers handle that. But also, and this is another major driving force, is to ensure the protection of our officers. There was too many times that, as a patrolman, I went on many, many, many calls by myself that were very dangerous. I've been on bar fights with multiple people out in the street fighting by myself. I've been on domestics by myself that, I was just speaking to somebody about this earlier today, one in particular, I was by myself, one, it was at the hospital, actually, and it was a domestic between a new mother and a new father. And obviously, new mothers, new fathers, it's a very trying time to begin with, not to mention a domestic violence situation that is on top of that. This particular situation, I arrived at the hospital, I'm the only one on duty, and the father is on top of the mother. I had to intervene and keep him from hurting her anymore. When I did that, the boy's father jumped on my back. I couldn't watch everybody. I was by myself. I had to do what I could to stop the lady, the new mother, from being hurt. And honestly, by the grace of God, it kept me from being hurt from the father blindsiding me and hurting me. That's just one example of what can happen to our officers out there working by themselves. I can give you example after example after example from me personally, but each officer could also give you example after example after example from themselves personally. And so, I knew that coming from the ranks, from patrolman to chief. I knew what the situation was, and I knew that the two prior chiefs before me, Virgil Miller and J.C. Rafferty, they both mentioned that one of my first priorities had to be the increase of manpower, because they dealt with it as chiefs as well back then. And I certainly know it, not only because it was being passed down to my position of chief, but I came from within, and I had plenty of examples to give of how difficult and dangerous it can be to work by yourself. We had one officer that had a gun pulled on him, and he was by himself on this call. And the man who pulled the gun on him tried to get the officer to kill him. And before the officer could react, pulled his gun, the man took off from him and in broad daylight ran out into the... broad daylight ran out into the street, broad daylight, this is not the middle of the night, this is when kids are walking up and down the sidewalk. There's a man with a gun who had just pointed it at one of our city police officers running down the street, and the officer bravely chased him to keep him from harming any of our citizens. But he was by himself, he couldn't watch everything. The man stops and shoots himself in the head right in front of one of our police officers. That's some of the things that our city officers were dealing with unfortunately in the past by themselves. And again, it's those kinds of stories that has been the driving force for me as chief to get away from that, to build our manpower levels up to where we can at least try to avoid those situations more often than not, and it not be vice versa, and you being working alone and facing those type of situations more often than not. And that was my reasoning for doing it. It was never selfish, it was never for personal gain, it was never to put a feather in my cap, it was to keep our men safe, because I know what we're up against. I've dealt with it for 19 years, and that's paramount to me. We call it a good day when we go home safe to our families at the end of the day. That's our priority. And that's what I do as chief, and I take that seriously, I take that to heart, I carry that burden on my shoulders 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and I will as long as I wear this badge. So, when I come to you folks and speak about manpower levels, I'm not doing so arbitrarily. We're coming to you with a need, not a want. And that's why I advocate to at least, at least keep our services where they're at right now, nine officers in the field. If Stewart goes to the school and gives us, takes us from nine to eight, we ask the council not only approve the pro officer, but in conjunction approve his replacement so we can at least keep nine officers in the field. It's at that level, and no less than that, that we can finally, just a little bit, get away from being alone so much. Now, granted, that's not, it's still not perfect, we still have occasions where we work alone. Murphy's Law still strikes, there's people that have to get through trainings, people have to get sick, people take vacations, and when that occurs, we still can't cover double or triple lap the schedule to where you're not going to be alone at least some. That still occurs with nine officers. But it occurs a lot less than it does with eight or seven or less than that. And so, I ask you, I humbly ask you to consider as we move forward with this, to not only approve the pro officer, but in turn, at least approve his replacement so we can keep nine officers in the field and respond to these calls effectively and safely, and handle and keep the level of service the way we are right now. I ask you to advance this because this program does have a timeline. As you know, we are tentatively shooting for establishing the pro officer position at the beginning of the next school year in August of 2016. And that may seem like a long way off, but there's a road that you have to traverse to get there before you're able to start with the program. And that road begins with the pro officer's training. He has to undergo training late spring, early summer. In addition to that, his replacement needs to be hired, go through the hiring process, which is lengthy, okay, it does take a few months. He needs to go through the training process once hired. The training process consists of not only field training and learning our own agency policies and procedures, and the specifics and the ins and outs of the department, but also the state police academy training, which takes 16 weeks. And right now, we're looking at, if we are to hire a replacement, the paperwork, the deadline to have the paperwork for that particular individual with the academy is late winter. And we have to have their paperwork in by late winter in order to get them in in the spring, because if we go much past the spring or early summer, we're not going to have an officer trained by the time we put the pro officer in the school. As odd as that sounds, it seems like so far down the road, but it's such a process that it really got to have the ball rolling much earlier. So, I can't give you an exact timeline, I know that the, I know that the timeline is sometime in, I believe, late February, February, early March for the application deadline for the officer's training, to get in in time to graduate the academy and get through field training by the time we appoint the pro officer to the school. And like I said, any later than that, there are going to be the rest of 2016 training in the academy, we'll have some gaps in our schedule.
Given it takes, it could take 60 days, 90 days to hire somebody.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Luckily, we have already got the ball rolling forward with the hiring process. We have been taking applications because there was an inadequate list, we needed a list for our civil service that was due to have a list. And so, we could run this in conjunction with that.
We have enough candidates?
We do, we had 21 applicants. Five of the applicants had to be denied by virtue of either an incomplete application or background. So, we have 16 that's scheduled to take the first phase of the testing, and that's the physical agility test.
I think we're all up here, I can't see for anybody else, but I think, based on the town hall meeting and the previous conversations, I think we're all endorsing what you're recommending there.
Can we get this on the next agenda?
Well, let's make sure that chief is done with his presentation.
I just wanted to say-
Do you have a question?
I want to ask a question.
Are you done?
Doug, do you have anything you want to add?
You've done everything. I will reiterate what Matt said, you know, we come to the council, I will say, we come to council with selfish reasons, we want to protect our officers at all costs, but we also come to you all with a need, not a want. We need more officers.
All right, now you can, Doug, sorry. Go ahead, Pam.
The academy, does it start every month, or is it like every four months?
It's, there's no definitive, they usually run four academies a year. And so, I mean, it's, it would seem quarterly, there's a couple where they have overlaps, separating by about five or six weeks. The spring academy begins, and then there's a summer academy. So, there will actually be two basic classes at the same time separated by about five or six weeks. There's a gap usually around the holidays, that's why it's not consistently one right after the other.
Seems to me like the, because I know this might just got hired in Randolph County, didn't get in the September classes, I think it is, so they have to wait until January.
Yeah, well, that's a good point. I mean, even though I say that, you know, if we go through this hiring process and we hire somebody in February, because honestly, that's how long it's going to take, because we haven't started any of the testing, it's going to take till at least February to get somebody hired. And you're talking about a window of about two or three weeks of getting the paperwork down there. Even if you could squeak it in there, you're not guaranteed that they're going to get into that next academy, because the state police academy trains every single police officer in the state of West Virginia. So, there's, you can imagine, you know, that's over 200 municipalities and 55 sheriff's departments, there's a waiting list a lot of times to get into that.
Also, do we have any of these applicants, do we have any applicants that's actually been through the police academy?
No, we do not.
Okay.
When you start the testing of these young gentlemen and ladies, can you do the testing any faster than what you do, or is there a time limit between tests?
Well, some places do, I've seen, and we've never done this, but I've seen some places give both the physical agility and the written test in the same day. Now, the snag that we run into, we have to order our written tests from a human resources company, and so, we could never, and while we've always had the physical agility first, is that gives us a number, those that pass the physical agility, that gives us a number for how many tests we need to purchase, because we, they're not cheap, we have to purchase X amount of tests, and we want to make sure we're buying, we're not buying too many. So, that's the logic behind why we do physical agility first, then the written exam. What we're also running into with this particular cycle is the holidays. The holidays is really putting a gap in the schedule, because typically, we usually run the testing phases every two weeks. So, the physical agility would begin two weeks later, the written, two weeks later the interview, and so on and so forth. And we're not able to do that because we're running right into the middle of the holidays, so we've got to have a little bit of a gap because of that. While we've kept it at two weeks, it just seems conducive to what we've done in the past for folks that do currently have other jobs, and the ability to schedule enough in advance and know enough in advance to be able to work it out to where they're able to make those specific phases.
That's exactly right. We found in the past, in the commissions, that if you don't give them that time, they may not be able to work into their schedule if they have another position somewhere else.
Well, I understand that, but if it comes to a critical place here, that we are running into a time element and getting our, everything done, every job that I've ever gone to, they didn't consider the fact that mine may have had something else to do that day. My interview was done, and if I wasn't there, I wasn't considered. It's just one of those things where maybe sometimes we are too compliant with the needs of people that may not even be hired.
Well, at this point, let me quantify a little bit more, because as the partner comes out of that civil service commission, we're looking at the written testing on the 16th at this point. We would have interviews at the beginning of January, that gives us plenty of time as far as our list of eligibles go. That's when we do interviews in January, and then ultimately, of course, they come back to council, not from the list of eligibles, but if we approve the pro and then approve the hire at the same time, then anybody from that top three list will come to us. So, we have the time, but if we start, if, I think really what the chief said, if we don't do anything the next two council meetings, we've kind of lost our window. We should be fine right now.
But I think you also, Mayor, if you wanted to, if we all wanted to, in your direction, is you could have a five or 10 minute special council meeting to go ahead and approve what Matt's recommending, if you wanted to, you know, bring it in a quicker timeframe. That's not out of question.
Well, let me, I'll address that immediately, because I think I do have a plan here that we could work. Rob, do you have a question, though?
Well, I'm wondering, can we put that on the next council agenda to approve the pro officer?
That's where I'm headed, that's exactly where I'm headed. Here's what my suggestion would be to council then, that we do ask the city attorney to forward to us for a first reading, the pro officer ordinance, that is only a one reading ordinance, but at the same time, I would ask that, that for the next meeting as well, that you have, what I would like to see is an ordinance for a 50 cent, a 75 cent increase in the police fee to cover the ninth man that will be coming on plus other expenses. I would even go as far as 50 cents to include that. If not, then we're looking, we're pulling a little bit more out of general fund. That would be my suggestion, but here, let me reiterate, you can have Scott come with the pro officer ordinance next week, it would be read, it's in a 30 day wait as well, you'll have that in January, February, you've got the pro officer. I would also suggest then that we ask Scott to have, then, we don't, we don't have to have an ordinance for that other officer, we just give you at that time, I would suggest. If council's ready, I've told you before, really, we need to have a fee increase in the police fee if we're going to do another officer, even though we're talking half.
$2, right?
Currently, it's at $1.50.
$1.50.
Well, the pro officer is going to be paid by the county, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. A portion of his salary, if you look at the 12 months that Sergeant Stewart is employed with the city of McCann, obviously, he'll still be a city employee, but at least-
He'll stay on our health?
Yes, sir. Approximately 10 months of his salary will be paid for, with levy funds, and I don't have the percent, but I can give you the breakdown. Stewart's salary and benefits is currently $54,300, that's salary and benefits, all the benefits we're paying minus health insurance. The levy will find $45,250 of that, so the city's share will be approximately $9,000. And so, if we pick up a new officer, the new officer's rate is going to be much lower than what Stewart's making right now, because he's a sergeant, and he's making one of the top salaries in the police department. A new officer's salary and benefits, even at the top rate, you know, and this is considering that the individual has a four-year degree in criminal justice, because we have a tiered level of how we pay our inter-level officers, and that's the top rate. Recognizing their education, their salary and benefits would be $42,700. So, even if you add what we would pick up in terms of the replacement, that 10th officer on our roster, or ninth officer in the field, and add it to our share of Stewart's salary, it's only coming to $51,750, just short of $52,000, which is just a little over $2,000 less than what we're paying Stewart now in the budget. We're actually not paying as much with 10 officers because of levy funding.
Are you saying they're hiring a new officer that would not cost the city another penny?
In annual costs, upfront costs, it would cost about $10,000 to $15,000 to outfit them and train them, that's just one-time expenses, but annual costs would actually be less because of the discrepancy in salaries.
I think we have to be careful, especially with the paper reporting this, we're not adding an officer, we're replacing-
Yes, sir.
Somebody that's going into schools. And, you know, we have to be careful of the words we use. And I met with Matt and Doug the other day on this issue, because I've had some questions and concerns, and, you know, they were, it's really interesting when you sit down and talk to the individuals that are involved in this. None of us, I don't think, think about, if you have nine officers, you know, with the holidays and vacations, you're almost down one anyway because of the time that they have in regard to their benefit package. So, you know, we have to really, I want you protecting Matt, I want Doug protesting everybody else. And I'm really concerned about the domestic violence things, that nobody should have to go to that situation alone. You'd never know what's going on. Both of them can turn on the officer when they're trying to help, you know, deal with.
Can I interject to one thing, though, and this is, and I understand, and I am fully supportive of the other officer and the pro officer, the replacement and the pro officer. My concern is, and it's something Michael brought up in his hour-long presentation an hour ago, that we're already looking at a happen to increase the police fee. If we were to look at doing the 50 cents now, let's just say 50 cents, make it simple, 50 cents, a dollar, now you're at $2 for a police fee, that will help absolutely cover plus some of the equipment model that will happen to be done, and we're talking equipment and a car, let's not forget that as well, increase to 50 cents, and you've already done some of what that five-year plan would have encouraged. So, I would say, you do 50 cents now, the next council, looking down the road, may have that other 50 cents to include to get to that other officer, which everybody wants to have.
Mr. Mayor, I have had numerous discussions with citizens about this, and I have had, yeah, one, disagree with an increase to the police fee. Matter of fact, they all wondered why we didn't increase the police fee when we did the fire fee. And I've been bringing up to them, and listen, what if we doubled it from $1.50 to $3? They said, "That is nothing." I don't see why we should fiddle around with a 50 cent fee. Double it to $1.50, that would take care of things for now and for the next few years down the road. I don't like to just take off where the other one's left, you know, take over where the other one's left off and keep increasing. I think a $1.50 implementation, make it $3, is nothing.
Well, the 8% figure that Michael talked about that supports the police budget from fees is always, I've never been able to figure that out. I think we, as citizens and residents, we want to have police protection. Societal changes are so dramatic in the last 20 years, that, you know, it's unbelievable. And, you know, there are some cities, municipalities, talking about, maybe the citizens or residents want to pay 100% of the police budget. That would be an unbelievable fee to us, so, I agree, $1.50 is very manageable.
All right, let's, okay, then, I would, we can't do any-
We can't do it now.
What we can do, though, is by consensus, allow permission to, for Scott, to take a look at, give us, bring us back for a draft, well, we've already had a draft, haven't we? Of the pro officer?
Yes.
Did you already give us a draft? Why don't you bring us the reading, if everybody's in consensus, for a first reading of the pro officer agreement?
Yes.
And please bring a fire fee, a police fee increase of $1.50 ordinance with you for a draft.
Yes, sir.
So, we all are in agreement of increase? Raise your hand.
Yes, we're all in.
Okay.
But have a timeline when you want to have the fee increased effectively, too.
Have a timeline, because we're looking at, gosh, it's all in the mail anyway. Add a timeline because we're looking at, gosh, it's all in the mail anyway, two draft ordinance, January, before, 30 days after, February, March, by the time you read it, we're going to get that. But we can have specifics. So that's going to be your task then, Scott, if you have one?
Yeah, I can bring an ordinance amending the charter to remove the 30-day requirement of one of these days, if you like.
All right. I like that.
Do it while you're digesting.
Chief, anything else, sir? Counsel, any other questions for the chief?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
One thing, Matt, you and Doug, I want to put this out there, when you have one officer out there by himself at night, you two work, too.
We have.
Yeah, you help out, too, at night, so I just want to put that out there that-
We have. We get calls in the middle of the night.
Are coming out when-
2:00, 3:00 AM.
Basically, isn't your point to do so.
Chief, thank you very much. We appreciate it all, and we appreciate your stories. Your plea is well-heard and wonderful.
And congratulations to you and your, all the guys in the police department.
All right, almost done with Department of Board reports. We have Scott McClure with PLOLC, McClure Go, city attorney. Yes, Scott, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Scott McClure, city attorney, just two small issues. Of course, the one thing, as the mayor's well up, we've got our pilot copy of our codified ordinances in the building. Yep, you hadn't mentioned, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, cancel that. I'm really excited about that, anyway. We're all going to be taking a look at in the upcoming months, and it's great to have a codified ordinance book with the proper numbers attached, and it will hopefully eliminate the listing of ordinances numerically. I'm really excited about it under the mayor's, sorry, Mayor, my apologies.
Yeah, I'd have done a lot better than that.
That's one thing, I'm really excited about that, ready to work on that and get a final draft together so we can have a bona fide codified ordinances book. The second issue is a draft ordinance, 398, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. Here is action of the Property Maintenance Code. I have two copies that I purchased myself. There are, under the laws of adopting this, we have to have a couple of these available for inspection, and we've also got to advertise a second reading as a class-one advertisement. And then it'll also talk about the mayor certifying the approval of the ordinance. So there's a couple of things under the ordinance we have to do, but this is, there's actually the state building codes, there's 12, excuse me, 12 separate volumes of it. Only the International Property Maintenance Code can be adopted singularly. You either adopt all of it or just this. The reason we don't adopt all of it is we don't have the resources to enforce the other 11 codes, which includes electrical, plumbing. The state fire marshal's going to require you to have somebody on staff to enforce these, and we're not quite there yet. Vince is getting some certifications on various things, so I'm thinking some juncture that might come back, but right now, we're going to focus on external sanitation issues, and that's the International Property Maintenance Code. There's a draft in the ordinance, it's a model ordinance that basically comes with the code. There's a couple of spots that you fill, that we filled in ourselves, let me find ours. Is my book here? Yeah, the parts we are filling in are the penalties, which are $100 and $500. Now, these are just standard penalties, we could make them anything. The other one is weed height, which is 12 inches, that's fairly standard. The other one is insect screens, the dates they have to be in, we selected April 1st, October 31st. So that's on page four of the ordinance. I don't know, if anybody wants to look at it and suggest any changes to it, it's based on the temperatures and the weather, a lot of it. So that's what it is. It's the International Property Maintenance Code, it deals with the external sanitation, external conditions of property. It's, I think, adopted by maybe 39 counties, 55 cities, something like that, and it's a useful tool to protect property values in Buchanan, West Virginia. Give Mr. Smith quite a bit of work to do, but again, it's something to help stabilize property values, improve aesthetics, and any obvious benefits from it. So if there's any questions on the International Property Maintenance Code, be glad to answer them. We adopted, and then will become the Buchanan Property Maintenance Code.
Counsel, so this is for your information, take it home, review it, make sure you understand it, but one of the main things that we've been hearing over the last three years is how come there's no teeth in anything that the city does in accordance with what it's a concern, particularly with properties. Here it is, you're getting it, you got it from the zoning officer, you're hired for this reason. Please read it, and let's get moving on this so we can get to the next step in the phase, which will be adopting the rest of those codes when we go to inspect the inside of those.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions on the Property Maintenance Code? Please read that. Okay, go ahead, Mr. McClure.
Yeah, I don't really have anything else, just working on the normal issues, so that covers what I've been working on.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any comments or questions for Mr. McClure? Excellent, fine job.
Thank you.
In your packets, we skipped over the first two pages, you'll see Resolution 201520 as it was presented last time, just for your information. You also have in there the Chase Morgan, which is the signature, the signing of that agreement, Resolution 2015. Moving on, in your package, you'll see a correspondence for First Energy Follow-Up Letter. You may not know this, but I did contact Mon Power and asked them about the situation as far as our power lines are concerned and our power poles. I wanted to know in particular when their inspection cycle is, and how come it is that all of a sudden some wire comes off over Westland Colleges and destroys two cars? And could that be an issue for any other residents or anybody else that we should be looking at? So you'll have in your package from Mr., I believe it was, yeah, Matt Hackner, who is the actual liaison, governmental liaison, and please read through that. It gives everything, the information we need, if the press wants a copy as well for information on how Mon Power or First Energy does during its inspections. I just wanted to get that on the record so that way nobody can say the city hasn't looked into it, why doesn't, why don't they go out and inspect them?
Thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
Thank you. So you have that under your consent agenda, folks. You have the approval of the minutes, the October 5 regular council meeting, approval of the minutes from the October 13 special city council meeting, approval of the billing and the wiring permits, approval of the payment of the bills, and approval of the past CAT invoices. Does anybody want to take anything out of the consent agenda? All right, then I would entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
I move.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Excellent, motion carries. Strategic issues for discussion and vote. Scott, we have the first reading of Orders 397, Animal Care and Control. It's in your package, folks.
I'm going to read the whole thing?
I'm hoping you've read it.
We, I just wanted to refer to that.
I'm hoping you all have read it.
I do, this is a comprehensive ordinance, it was an existing ordinance, I think, from 2001. The Animal Control Committee made extensive a suggestion for rewrites on it. I could basically sum it up in four areas that we mentioned last time. The one, the ordinance has changed from breed-specific. The ordinance was basically kind of a pit bull, Staffordshire terrier ordinance, and based on the recommendations of the commission, we removed those references to pit bull. So this ordinance is now non-breed-specific. It could be a Chihuahua, it could be any type of dog, I think there's actually statistics, Chihuahuas like more than pit bulls. So anyhow, that's one thing, this ordinance is now non-breed-specific. An important element of the new ordinance is, based on the recommendations of the committee, is it's a non-tethering ordinance that is found in 300.16, I believe, of the ordinance, which is the tethering and abuse of animals, 300.17, excuse me, of the ordinance. It's very detailed, it's very specific, it's in accordance with the committee's recommendations, certain requirements contained in there that anybody can take a look at. The other aspect of the ordinance that changed significantly is in accordance with the recent West Virginia Supreme Court decision regarding who can have dogs euthanized or put down, and the court recently said that only a state court, i.e. the circuit court, or magistrate court, could order a dangerous dog destroyed. So any reference in our existing ordinance to the destruction of animals has been pretty much taken out, and it will be, if that case should arise, it would be required incumbent upon us to file something in state court to have a state judge order that. The next thing that was kind of wholesale changes and something that made some good sense is we took out the administrative aspects of it from the mayor's office and from the commission, and put all issues dealing with people's potentially dangerous animals and in humane conditions, we placed all that in municipal court. So there is no more committee or the mayor making decisions related to dangerous dogs or animal safety. All that would be handled within the jurisdiction and the purview of the municipal court. Recently, I got an email from the judge, and we had a little back and forth. He had some fairly modest changes that we were attempting to address. Most of them were clerical or spelling. He noted he didn't like any of the provisions of 300.17, I believe.
That's correct.
Yes.
17 or 16?
16.
Yes, 316. 17 is livestock.
Yeah, excuse me. 316, not dogs.
Section 2, tethering of dogs.
The other issue was there was, basically, once a dog's declared dangerous, there was five or six separate things that you could do. I thought it was, that the judge could order, I thought it was implicit that those were kind of, you know, one or all, and so we put some language that said, judge could order any or all of these. To change that, I think it's probably implicit in there that the judge could order that, but that's one of the issues that we can discuss. One issue he suggested, and I think it came out of the committee's suggestion, that the municipal judge would pursue this issue to circuit court for destruction of dogs. I think that's unconstitutional. Everybody is, a dog is your property, so you have a property interest in it. A judge is supposed to be a neutral and detached magistrate. He shouldn't be taking anything to circuit court, it should be up to the humane officer, the police department, or the city attorney to pursue those actions in court, and not the judge. Let him stay neutral and detached, independent arbiter. So we talked about that, and I think he was in agreement with that issue. That's really, I can answer any questions. It was a lot of work. The committee obviously did a ton of work, I think it was before them on several occasions. I believe this ordinance reflects their suggestions. Now, obviously, in accordance with the statute 300-20, the council has to hear this and review it and do something with it, so that's kind of the posture it's in now. You all can take it, change it, modify it, send it back wherever it is that you like, or move it on, pass it, but under 300-20 of our codified ordinances, all recommendations which the commission seeks the council to formally consider shall be submitted to the council in written form and shall be duly considered by the council during a regularly convened council meeting with the commission's report to be made part of the minutes. And so that's where, that's the posture of this ordinance now. It's been vetted through the commission, and now it's before council for their handling.
So you have, for you, a recommended first reading of Orders 397, Animal Care and Control, from our city attorney, also recommended from the Animal Care and Control Commission. What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask some questions to-
Yep, let's go. I'll do it this way. Go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
Scott, as a city attorney-
Yes, sir.
When you talk to Judge Levine, have you made all the different observations that he has discussed with you as far as updating the ordinance or not?
Not all of them. Most of them, I could go over a couple of times.
So we're really not doing it for sure tonight?
Yeah. There are some modifications on there that you could amend tonight. I mean, you obviously know the state law says you cannot materially amend something, this is not a material amendment, so the first reading is usually the perfect time to amend this ordinance.
I appreciate the hard work of the commission and what their total, you know, what they want to accomplish in regard to, you know, 5% of the people out there, it seems like we try to legislate common sense all the time, and I think it's, you said comprehensive and detailed, I think it's a little bit too comprehensive and detailed. And I would, from my position, I think we still have some work on it, that if we're going to adopt this kind of ordinance, I think maybe at some point, Tom Mayor, we ought to have a special meeting to really discuss it. And here, have Judge Levine here also to discuss some of the issues that he's concerned about.
I invited him tonight.
Yeah.
He may have had something else.
I'm, I just don't feel comfortable voting on it this evening, so.
May I say something?
Sure.
We've worked on this for over a year, and most of the recommendations that we made have come from existing ordinances in West Virginia. So we're not proposing anything radical that's in this ordinance, and it's come through many cycles here. So I'd like to know if there's some last-minute change that's come up that you're opposed to, could you specifically name it?
Well, I think a lot of people, from what I'm hearing, Maria, are very concerned about the tethering issue.
Okay, and we're concerned about it, too, because dogs are left out.
Yeah.
And, you know, 24/7, you have a dog on a leash, don't have a dog.
Yeah.
That's ridiculous, and it makes them violent, and it's unhealthy for them, and it's cruelty.
Well, how about your timeline?
Timeline, I'm happy to adjust. I mean, my dog goes out, I'm out there with him. I don't leave my dog on a leash. And it is severe, and we can modify that easily. So without throwing out the whole thing, we can modify a timeline.
I'm not suggesting we throw out the whole thing.
Okay.
I didn't say that.
I'd like to put this to bed.
Well, I think we can do a timeline, but I'm not comfortable with voting on it.
That's my opinion.
I'm not going to vote on it tonight.
I think we can make amendments to the timeline right here and now, if you have something in mind.
Well, and I'm with Maria because The Record Delta did a huge article on this last time, and I feel adequately certain that if a large percentage of Buchanan was that upset with this, they would have come to speak about it.
When was your article?
It was Monday.
Yeah.
That's not a timeline.
I've had 25 to 30 people contact me over the timeline on tethering. 15 minutes of putting your dog out, they say, that is ridiculous. They don't want that in there because they don't want to be taken, possibly if it's out there for 17 minutes, somebody's going to come by and say, you know, 14, 15 minutes, four times a day.
Take a number. What would they be comfortable with?
Well, you know, it's just a-
Okay, wait, 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 listen up. Okay, wait. We are out of control here, we're out of order. We said, I will absolutely recognize you. You guys know this, you're always at my meeting. If you've got something to say, I'm going to recognize you. But right now, we're in the middle of a discussion between the city attorney and the council members who have to consider this. We're the ones that are looking at it. So if a member of council at this point, perhaps Mr. Thomas would say, I would rather see that to be a two-hour tethering change to the amended, would the consensus of the council be to do that, then we would give Mr. McClure the opportunity to change that two hours and come back with another draft. If you're not happy with this, you can table this discussion, take it home, read it, give it to your constituents, have them digest it and give you the suggestions, and then come back and have Mr., and give it to Mr. McClure to change. Your other option is to throw it out with the bathwater and take it back and give it back to the Animal Care and Control Commission. Those are your three options. If there are other minor details in here besides a timeline change from 15 minutes to an hour to two hours, unless there has something to do with the taking it from the mayor's office to determine who's euthanizing and determining who is a dangerous dog who has absolutely no law experience whatsoever with that, and the odds are, you're not going to have a mayor that has that, then it's going to the magistrate court. That is the other major change in this. There is not a whole lot of other changes in this. Okay, counsel, do we understand? Now, I am going to allow you to ask Mr. McClure, counsel, any questions you have regarding this, if you want something changed in particular or specifically, or you can actually do something to table it for another meeting, you can take, there's a couple of options. But I'm going to give you the option of questioning, then I will give our audience members the opportunity to say what they want to say. Okay? Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, any other? Dave, you already spoke. Pam, what do you got?
Well, I wasn't finished.
I'll come back to it.
Okay, thanks.
I've got several calls about the tethering also, and personally, I feel 15 minutes is not adequate. I mean, what if I, if it's a hot day and I want to chain my dog outside, which I don't anymore because I've got a fence, but everybody's not able to have a fence, but sometimes you have to tie your dog up- But, sometimes you have to tie your dog up to go to the grocery store or go to a doctor appointment. And, and if you, majority of people's going to take care of their dogs, right? You have the few who don't.
Right.
And those are the ones that we need to.
See, my dog's not outside and my son talks.
I understand that. But, but a lot of people have their dogs outside, period. But, I just think the 15 minutes is actually ridiculous amount of time. I'll be honest.
Do you have suggested time? Do you have any?
No, no. I mean, I don't, I don't like the idea of putting 24 hours, a dog out there for 24 hours at a time. But, I don't see a problem with two to three hours at a time.
Okay, so, we narrow it down to two, three hours. Mary.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. I don't think it's right for any of you people to tell me what to do with my dog. That's my dog. That's my property. I love it. I'm going to tether her out there because she loves it outside. She could go underneath my carport, she could go dig in my flower bed all she wants. Okay? That's my dog. If it's too hot, I'm going to bring her in. And I don't leave her out there in severe weather. And I may be one of the probably 95% of people who do love their dogs and takes care of their dogs. I don't like to, don't tell me how to take care of my animal.
So, can you be a little more specific on what you're saying?
I don't like the time limit, the li, time limit on tethering. Not, we don't have a fence. My neighbors have a fence in the yard. Their little dog is yappy, yappy, yappy all the time. I don't complain. That's what little dogs do. They're yappy, yappy, yappy all the time.
So, that's timeline. So, does you have anything else in the ordinance besides the tethering timeline?
Uh, yeah, there was, but I can't find it.
Okay, Robin, how about you? While you're looking for that, because I'm going to come back and say it to you in a moment.
I would like to change the timeline for the tethering.
Okay.
Yes. Um, the fines, in my mind, are a little high, but if everyone were home. Yeah, if everyone else is okay with them, I'll accept it.
Those can be amended as well. I mean, there's not very many things that are $1,000 fines in municipal courts.
I'm okay with that. We just wanted to give teeth to them.
You want to get something done.
Okay.
And so, that could be amended number two if council would have such your suggestion.
And one more real quick issue, and I don't mean to interrupt anybody. The judge had a problem with the possibility of incarceration. Now, that's only on the third offense. And I mean, look, this is a legislative, this is a policy choice, this is a public issue choice, but by the time somebody's got three offenses, I mean, maybe the threat of incarceration is warranted. I know a lot of the municipal ordinances don't have that threat. A lot of cities have it for every single fine, you know, up to $500 fine or 30 days in jail or both. But, he, he had a concern about that because that triggers a right to a jury trial and certainly understood that. I just want to point out, there's a first offense, there's a second offense, and then the third offense, only then is there a possibility of incarceration. And the judge don't have to incarcerate anybody. That would, that would trigger the potential for a jury trial, which obviously would have some cause for the town. So, I wanted to point that out, that he didn't mention that. I, me personally, I don't have a big problem with it because again, it's on the third offense. Somebody's coming back a lot once you give that far along.
Yeah, they shouldn't even have a dog though.
No.
Of course, I realize this is only going to be enforced in extreme circumstances. I mean, you'd have to be terrible to your pet to, for someone to be going around checking on what you're doing. Most people are humane, humane to their pets and they love them. I love mine.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Well, I, I again want to applaud the commission for what they're trying to accomplish. I, I want to talk to Judge Levine to question him about some of the concerns that he's raised with you, Scott.
Sure.
And, and I would like to, I, I want to go through the whole ordinance again.
I do too.
And, you know, I think we need something done. There are people that are, you know, my God, look at what we're doing to our kids today. The people that abuse their children. And.
We don't have an ordinance for that.
There are, there are.
We do have laws.
Yeah, there, there are animals that are not, that are, rather than abused maybe, are neglected and that's just as bad as abused. And so, I, I don't want to throw the, this out completely. I just want to say, I want to review it again with a fine tooth comb from my perspective. Talk with Scott, you know, a personal conversation with Scott.
Sure.
Go over, thanks, give me one.
Yeah.
And I want to talk to the judge also, and maybe it's important for the judge to sit down with us at a council meeting and give us his concern. I think we ought to get this done at some point in time soon. Don't just say. I understand, I understand, Maria. I understand. But, I'm not saying we're not going to do it. I'm just saying, I think it needs to be refined further. And you all, I'm not going to call you zealots. I, I am that way.
I think call worse, David.
Well, okay, there's, uh, I, people think I'm nuts with my little squirrel in my backyard, you know, and.
I can help you anyway.
Yeah, I know. And so, my goal is to have this accomplished soon rather than like, sooner rather than later. But, I want to review it again with a fine tooth comb, talk to Scott and talk to, to Randy. And I will call you, Maria. And I'll call Robin, Kio too, and Elisa. Because I know what you're trying to accomplish.
All right, that's great.
Before we move on.
We're not moving on from there, but Maria.
I, I asked to speak. May I ask, you know, if we can, who's going to enforce this?
That's another question.
Okay, who's going to enforce it?
Is that a little rhetorical?
Not just that.
Well, that's one of the issues.
But, here's the other deal. Elisa, you see my dog tied up out front and it may be a little hot for you. Are you going to report me and call the police and tell somebody that I'm abusing my animal? Because I've left her out there all day long?
I'll have to answer that with this. If.
No, I asked you a question.
If I turn by.
Are you home in the neighborhood looking for dogs who are abused? I remember at one meeting, you said you went somewhere and it wasn't in the city limits and you saw these dogs that were being abused.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are you going to do, you going to be the, the dog watcher?
Normally, when we find out about a case like that, it's because a neighbor has called us.
Right. And I've reported people who have done that.
Are we going to be spending our free time? I don't know if you're aware of it, but my husband's out of the country. I'm working.
I'm all aware about that.
Okay, I'm working four jobs right now, Mary. I don't have time to drive around and do that. But, there is a property, not in the city limits, that's already been reported for cruelty once. And the police had to go up, not the city, because it's out of the city limits. And yes, it's still being, anytime anybody happens to be that way, we kind of look. We don't step on the property, you just kind of look and make a note. Are we going to drive around town? No. Now, the exception to that would be if the channels five and 12 are asking people to please stay indoors.
Yes.
Keep their children and their pets indoors. Then, if somebody calls my house and says, "You might want to drive down by Boggs Street because there's two dogs tied out down there, they're screaming their heads off, they're freezing to death." Yeah, I'm driving now.
Okay. Counsel, let me.
Wait, go ahead and do that.
Let me go this way with it. I need you to understand, under the enforcement code, right now, again, the county has lost their code enforcement officer. We talked in our town hall meeting and we talked in our, not code enforcement, our animal control officer.
Animal control.
We talked in the dual meeting of the city participating and beginning to become more active in the animal care, or the animal control situation. And particularly what's happening in the city of Buchanan. I also mentioned a part-time police officer, animal control officer at the same time. Before, we can even do that, we have to have an ordinance in place for that, that officer to be able to use. I'm hoping that having this ahead of time, by the time we get to that enforcement officer who's going to be doing that for us, that that ordinance is there and the citizens understand it. And of course, discretion is given to not only the judge, but to that enforcement officer. Let's say there's some reason a senior citizen's had a heart attack, but they left their poor dog tethered outside. Do you think that enforcement officer is actually going to give them a ticket?
No.
You see what I'm saying? There is some discretion in here. And you guys want to take all this so literally, and I know for many years, many attorneys have said, "You got to take this so literally." There is a little discretion between what the officers can do and what the judge can do. All we're trying to do now is get something inconcret. And if you don't like the timeline, we can change it. If you don't like the fees, we can change it. But, as long as the wording of how we actually enforce this.
Code.
Is the most important thing.
That's the most important.
Okay? So, I'm hearing at this point though, so that we can get on.
Yeah.
I'm hearing that perhaps we want to table this until another meeting. Is that it? Or you want to throw back?
That's my recommendation.
So, I would have a motion then to table the first reading of ordinance 397 Animal Care Control. How many motions? Do I have a second? We'll table it till, um, let's go to the December meeting, the first meeting in December.
Second, that'd give me some time and all.
December 3rd.
December 3rd meeting.
3rd.
Tabled to the December 3rd. I would like to have a decision back by then from council.
And even beforehand.
So, I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion on that? Is anybody on it?
Yeah, there's, there's one discussion.
What's that?
And it's because of the comments you made, Mayor.
Which, I'm sorry.
Um, the, no, Mayor. Mr. Edwards. When you look at the animal control officer, I think it'd be very interesting to find out from the county, did they have any kind of documentation or percentage proportion how much time they spend within the city limits versus outside the city limits? And you talked about maybe having a, a part-time person. You know, we're, residents are already paying for an animal control person full-time with the county. The problem is, we never really, you know, we can't get people to stay in that position. And I think that's, I don't know. That's one of the challenges. Years ago, I think one of the persons that was doing it was doing it part-time anyway, was working full-time someplace else. So, you know, we got some other issues we have to deal with.
Yeah.
But, go ahead and call for it.
Um, I, I appreciate what you're saying and you're absolutely right. That's why I think that citizens of Buchanan deserve the person. We already have a cat warden and Jerry Wongzlee through the street department, but if we're really going to be serious about what we're going to be doing for our pets, then, it's Jeff Wongzlee and I always get it backwards. Then this is what we need to do. So, I have a motion, I have a second, we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye.
I have one more.
Oh, sorry, one more.
Comment to make.
Go ahead.
Now, I forget what it was. No. Uh, it's a bit, it's about the warden. I see, I see us, instead of having a warden that is a part-time police officer, I see a lot of extra work having to be done by our zoning enforcement officer. And I would rather see an assistant to the zoning enforcement officer and also be the animal control officer in the city. So, that's my comment.
That's not a bad idea. And I was going to add to what David said. Actually, today, there was, we have numbers on the statistics for the cats and the dogs. The county commissioner does it. And there was one today, I'll get you, I have it in my office. Upstate County, I will tell you, was the least numbers compared to Lewis County as far as cats and dogs being brought in and.
Oh, really?
I'm afraid euthanized, yes.
Well, what?
And at least euthanized as well. Lewis County has more euthanized animals that are brought in with children than the county, than Upstate County, but that's because they do bring in a lot more as well. So, I had to guess those were the numbers. All right, so, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. All right, one of our strategic issues is city council compensation. Who would like to lead that discussion? Mr. Thomas?
I didn't say anything.
I thought you got you.
You're all going to say something. I'll say, I'll say something.
Good guy.
I have, you know, suggested that I think it's, we need to have a serious consideration of an increase for the elected positions, not the board positions, but the elected positions. And all of us on city council, we can't give ourselves a raise, first of all. We're not eligible for it. It would be for the next election cycle. So, if, if we suggest sometime in the next month or two that there will be an increase for the elected positions, it wouldn't go in effect until the next cycle. And Mary's seat is not up, so she wouldn't be eligible for it. And the recorder wouldn't be up because it's still a two-year unexpired term with Mr. Edwards essentially. But, we, we each make, only council, $200 per month for the elected position. The recorder, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ambie and Michael, if I use the wrong numbers, I believe the recorder gets $150 a month. And then, the mayor gets $250 a month. Now, the council positions, each of us are on a board, serving on a board, so we get an extra $200. So, our total compensation for one year is $4,800. It's been that way for almost 11 and a half years. The city recorder gets additional compensation for their board responsibilities, so they get a total of $9,000 a year. And the mayor gets $3,000 a, a year for $250 a month, $3,000 a year, and gets additional compensation for his, for the board position, brings it up somewhere over $22,000. There are no benefits, which I think is fine. You know, we're, we're not full-time people. We don't get any, when I first ran for council years ago, I was told by a lot of people, "Oh, my God, you're going to get health benefits." Well, we don't. We don't get any health insurance. We don't get any pension plan, although years ago, you could opt into the, the pension plan if you wanted. But, I don't think, I don't know if anybody does it or not. But, the only benefit we get is a reimbursement for a rotary screening once a year. Okay? I am really, I guess, in some ways pushing that if we make this decision, we should do it so that the people who are going to run for the next cycle know what's happening as far as compensation. When I ran the first time in 2004, a week or two after you declared candidacy, that council gave a large increase, well, it hadn't been done for years. So, they gave an increase. And I'm, I think we ought to say, okay, if we're going to do it, let's do it, let people know about it. I don't think it's unreasonable to expect something after 11, 11 and a half years. You know, what is that figure? Well, you know, I've toyed around with that. Again, don't get paid for board at all. What you're doing out is, stays the same. But, as elected official, you might want to go from 200 a month and go maybe to 300 or 400 a month. 400 a month. Uh, as a city recorder, you know, $1,800 for that position is, I know they're getting board compensation, but I think it should be more than 1,800, maybe 3,600 or 5,400. I'm just throwing the figures out. And the mayor, uh, maybe 6,000 to 9,000. You have to understand that we do a lot of work that nobody sees. Um, you know, we have to review the ordinances, we have to, we talk to citizens and so forth. Um, you know, that's my position. You know, I didn't run for, for city council to make money, that's for sure. I did it because I wanted to serve the community. I get a little bit of compensation with it, but it's not extraordinary. We should not compare ourselves to, you know, if you look at municipalities versus their counterparts in the county, I, there's a huge gap there. It's unbelievable. I don't think we should even approach that gap. But I do think it's time, after eleven and a half years, we ought to do something, and we should announce it before the election cycle deadline is passed. That's my position, so.
All right, Mr. Thomas, thank you very much. Any other council want to chime in on that?
Yeah, I would.
Go ahead, Mr. Pugh.
I would like to say that, uh, I don't think we should get paid for going to our board meetings. I think that when, uh, the next council gets elected, they should be expected to attend board meetings. They should be appointed to a certain one in which they would participate, but I think they should be expected to go to as many of the other, uh, meetings to keep up to date on what's going on. Just because I'm on waterboard doesn't mean I shouldn't be up to date with what's going on with the, uh, with the other boards too. And, and if that's the case, and if nobody reads their minutes that are sent to us and everything like that, you can't be up to date with anything. Uh, I, I would say we get $400 a month right now. I would say an increase to $600 a month would not be, um, you know, would not be a terrible increase. But, uh, I wouldn't, uh, I don't think we should double our salaries, but I would say the increase in by half of what we get would not be unheard of. And as far as the mayor's salary, uh, I, our mayor does a full-time mayor's job right here. The first mayor since Junior Hinkle, I think, had ever stayed in the office and did, and did a lot of work and researched everything, and is familiar with everything that goes on in each department in, in this, uh, city. And I think the mayor's salary should be adjusted as such, and I would not be, you know, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to giving a $30, $35,000 salary to a mayor, knowing that he's going to be here full-time. If we ever have a mayor that disputes that, then they should realize going into the, to their electoral, that they are expected to spend a lot of time in here. And if you don't have a job, uh, if you don't intend to do that, you shouldn't run. Same with all the council people too. But, uh, my thing is increase by half of what we've got.
But do it just for the elected positions.
Just for the elected positions.
With no consideration on the board.
With no consideration on the board and, and, and do it like that. And I didn't know we got reimbursed for our rotary screenings.
Yeah, just give us the receipt, we'll give it back.
I don't know.
Any other comments from council?
About that issue?
Yes. Compensation, then I would ask...
I can just say one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I was elected by the people, which I've enjoyed all these years, and I still plan on running, but I just kind of estimate every, the last year, the amount of time that I put in for meetings and, and whatever else. I think I've made like $2.05 an hour when I came down to it, so.
You're right.
So it's not a big paying job.
And you, and you do other things other than the board and, and the council. I mean, there's other, I mean, all of us have other...
All the collateral duties that, that go...
And what nobody realized, I don't think, is that we, we talk about what they meet, what they make at the other end of the street, the county commissioners. It's $40,000 a year, I believe, uh, compared to our $4,800 a year. But my friends, we, uh, we go to jail for the same offenses that they do. You know, if, if we break the law, the same what they break the law, we all go to jail for the same thing.
They take their benefits, it's over $60,000.
Well, they take their benefits over $60,000. Well, anyway, I'm done.
If you don't mind, just council pretty much all in agreeable, then, then here's what I would ask. Unless there's an objection, I would ask that Scott McMoore come with, back to us with a draft ordinance of what a increase of a salary by 50% would be, and a draft ordinance for such for you to look at. Again, this is a draft ordinance, not unlike what you had with the, uh, ordinance tonight and previous ordinances. Look at it, do your research, figure out what constituents have to say. We can always just dismiss it, but I'm agreeable with, um, Mr. Thomas at this point, that we've talked enough about it. If we're going to do anything, it's time to put the rubber to the road.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would have to agree that Mr. Edwards has made this a full-time job, and I would like to see the mayor's down the road to make it a full-time job. But if we, if we have a mayor that puts in the time that he has done, I feel we, he needs also be getting health insurance. And whether that means as much as a 50% raise, I'm not sure, but I think, I think, I would like to see that for our mayor, at least, at least.
We have to have at least, what, 21 and a half, 20, more than, 21 hours a week?
I don't think...
Thirty.
Let me interject on that.
I think that's the public employee's retirement system.
Thirty-two for health.
I would not, I would not endorse such an action as the, as the mayor. Um, I, I appreciate that, but the mayor should consider the council first, with my, you guys do, are the vote, I mean. So before you do that to the mayor, then I think that the, and it's not unheard of, Elkhart has got their own health, they do their health insurance, um, for the council. That would be my suggestion, and it just, it's all inclusive, there's not, in this case, the difference between the mayor and the council.
Well, we need, we need to include Michael in this discussion also.
Yes.
As a treasurer. But I, I also, I also think, when you're talking about the compensation, the way it was done, the splitting the, uh, council for a board and the elected position, and then paying the recorder and the mayor for their responsibilities on board. You know, we at some point in time, this city must give serious consideration to reviewing the city charter. Uh, it's outdated, it's unwieldy in many ways, and, you know, we ask, we should, the citizens, we ask them, do they think it should be looked at again and streamline it, uh, make things that are up to date with all the state laws and so forth. Um, that's not a bad thing to do. And I, I don't agree, Ron, to some degree, uh, or Pam, about the, Rick, I appreciate your comment about the health insurance. Um, you have to ask yourself, every mayor comes at the position with a different, uh, set of targets in regard to how he views this job. You know, a lot, a lot of mayors, um, and I'm not making any judgment on this, they rely very heavily on the treasurer administrator and all the supervisors, so they're not feeling they have to do 40 or 50 hours a week. Because they, their responsibility, our responsibility, is make sure we have good people in those important positions. And I think we do. So I don't, to me, the mayor in some ways ought to be an ambassador for, for Buckhannon.
He is.
Yeah, I mean, but not necessarily. I don't, I don't think the mayor should be a micromanager either. You know, I think it should be our supervisors and our treasurer and so forth are critical to how we're doing, and I think they've shown that over the X amount of years.
Thank you, Dave. Um, and just to further note, and I was going to mention on the codification as well, we're looking at codifying the charter, which means nothing on changing any of the state government stuff, but if you wanted to change its form of government and go away to city manager stuff, then that takes a vote, as you know, as well as anyone else. What do you got, Dennis?
Regarding that, I was on a committee a few years ago to...
The Charter Review Committee?
Charter Review, and I think you sat on it too.
I did.
And we, we put it to the vote, to the voters. Only a couple hundred people showed up to vote, and it was turned down. And we went, there's a timelat, now we got to wait before we can bring it up to the voters again.
And there was, there was, that was a bad timing, I think, as far as...
Could be, yeah.
We can do a lot on the codification of the charter. Go ahead.
I, I think you're probably aware, there is a provision in state code where you could amend the charter for some things by ordinance.
Right.
Now, look, that's not always recommended because it's, the charter's the constitution of Buckhannon, and it's the will of the people, so by and large, you want to take that back. But for example, something that's archaic as the 30-day waiting period to enact an ordinance, I think you would get quite a bit of consensus that you ought to change that and make ordinances effective upon passage. And I mean, I would, I could bring an ordinance, now you got to advertise it very soon, you got to do it, but you could bring an, for something like that, that's just so outdated, it doesn't make sense to anybody, you could bring an ordinance to amend the charter to eliminate that. So if somebody asked me to do that, instructed me to do that, certainly would be well done.
And it's not unlike right now in our city charter, we have pig laws, where your pig is, your pet pig is not allowed to be running, roaming the streets. I'm sorry, now he has pet pigs, and there's a state law saying you can't have domesticated animals in. So you can take that out of the charter, streamline it, get down to where you want to be. You just can't really start dealing with any of the fundamentals of government as established by the...
There's some things you can do about that alternative method by ordinance that you ought to look into.
And we can do that next, so let's, let's, that's going to be the next thing on our codification. This has been a year and a half-long process, as far as my codification goes. These things take that long.
That should be...
You know that.
That should be the next election cycle, considering that.
I think so as well.
With a new, I mean, we got four count, new council members coming in potentially, and a new mayor.
They do need to discuss that. All right, let's get on to comments and announcements, I know, because I really have to go to the restroom soon. Mary Alba, make it up, man. Well, I can't tell that what Matthew said earlier, so I'm not going to say anything but this. Um, Maria and Lisa, and anybody else that worked on this, I don't want you to think that I think that this, um, um, animal thing is, is not good. It's, it's, it's a good thing. Um, but I do see a couple of things I'd like to change, and I will bring them back, or, and I'll also get with each of you to discuss what they are, so maybe you could explain to me a little bit. Not right now, okay, but I just wanted to say thank you.
I'm happy to do that. As voting members of the commission, I'd like you to keep that in mind. Not all members who are putting input here are voting members of the commission. So when you review what's in front of you, understand that it was the voting members of the commission who came to 100% consensus to bring before you things that occurred in other places.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. Okay. And also to acknowledge, um, Randy Levine's help on this, because he was very helpful in explaining. He's the instigator.
He's the non-voting member.
Yeah, but he was the instigator of looking at this, this whole ordinance.
Right, and we've been running around with him.
Yeah, I could see that.
He was, uh, he wanted to our attention first, which is a good thing, now we can get it out.
Yeah, we, we'll get it fixed. Um, oh, yeah, I do, just one more. I want to say thank you to all the people who come out for the Veterans Day parade this year. There were a lot of, a lot of people, and, you know, and the children's group, the bands, and it was really wonderful, and I really appreciate that. And, um, and I'm speaking for the lot of veterans and...
There's another celebration tomorrow morning.
And, and we also have, if you are a veteran, we're having, or not we, the, um, middle schools having their salute to the veterans tomorrow, beginning at nine o'clock, and it's going to be a terrific program. Um, and they always wait till after Veterans Day because, and you'll be thinking about that one all the rest of the year, because it's really good. So come out and join us if you can get away tomorrow at nine. Thank you, Mary. We appreciate that and all the work that you do with the veterans. Mrs. Capery?
Um, I just want to remind everybody that we're meeting this Monday, November the 23rd, right here at Council Chambers at eight o'clock in the morning to start on the decorations for downtown, and we really need volunteers. Uh, anybody that can come out, help would be appreciated. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week. Be safe in your travels and have a good time with your families.
Thank you, Mrs. Capery. Mr. Pew?
I'd like to, uh, invite everybody to the December the 5th concert, benefit concert for the Parish House Cross Lines at the West Virginia Wesleyan Performing Arts Center. Uh, admission is cans of food or Toys for Tots, and you'll see a three different performers in the gospel, uh, southern gospel range. The Silvertones from California, the, uh, shoot, Ed Crawford, uh, who sang baritone for the Kingsman Gospel Quartet, uh, for 10 years, and Kelly Coburn, our local girl here, who's making a really, uh, big splash in the southern gospel industry. So it's at seven o'clock on the evening of, uh, December the 5th at the Performing Arts Center. In conjunction with that, the ladies will have the Christmas tree auction that night in the Greek room. Uh, that's, uh, who put that on, Jody? Do you remember? Uh, it's benefit, uh, what, what were the, um...
Is it the tree, is it first meeting?
Yeah, the tree's first meeting.
The Arts Alliance?
The Arts Alliance?
Maybe it's the Arts Alliance.
Yeah, the tree and wreath auction, they'll be in the Greek room in conjunction with the concert.
Same time.
Yes.
So come on out and support them, and support the Parish House, who's in need now of all kinds of donations of food supplies and everything. And other than that, have a great Thanksgiving. Uh, y'all go out there and eat all you want, and get sick and everything like that, and then come back to us.
Thank you, Mr. Pew. Uh, Mrs. Simons?
Well, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I myself, I am so thankful for such a, a mayor. He, he obviously loves his town, and he fits up with the best of it. But, no, I'm joking. Okay, I'm joking. But he does care and loves his town, it's obvious. My coworkers, my co-council, I love being on city council. My friends sitting out here, you obviously care, you wouldn't be here. Uh, for the hard-working city police that we have, uh, city administrators. Uh, we live in a wonderful town, and communication is the key to everything. There's nothing we can't talk about and nothing we can't work out if we just sit down at the table.
Miss Simons. Uh, Mr. Thomas, last but not least.
The, uh, I, I think the city is at an inflection point on a lot of things that we have discussed recently, and I really appreciate Michael, uh, putting that five-year plan together. Again, uh, it's a dialogue that we need to have, and talk about difficult issues for us for the future. Uh, I thank, I thank the, uh, the commission that's recommended the, the ordinance that we're going to look at again. Um, I do want to talk to some other people, review it again one more time. Uh, but the goal that you're trying to achieve is, is great. Maybe we'll have a squirrel ordinance someday, but...
We only get that one.
I know we do, unfortunately. But the, um, I also had a very good conversation with Brian Berkstrom yesterday from the Record Delta, he's the editor of it, and he wrote a piece about three weeks ago, uh, that I took somewhat issues with, and we had a great discussion. Uh, I suggested to Brian that maybe he would like to come to a meeting someday and take his, take the editor off his, uh, you know, not wear that hat, but he's a young enthusiastic person that's got, um, different opinions than somebody like me is an old curmudgeon, but we also agree on a lot of things. And it's just a great dialogue that you can have, the community, where you can call somebody up and say, "I think what you said or wrote, I don't agree with. Let's get together and talk." And, um, we did that. We, I made him some coffee. I didn't tell him what I put in, sometimes. We had a nice hour and a half discussion. And I also had a discussion with the Matt Gregory and Doug Loudon for about an hour. They drank my coffee too, and, um, you know, we...
How you feeling, guys?
We're very, we're very blessed with, uh, our law enforcement people and, you know, uh, the story that Matt told about the hospital. Um, I just shake my head and say, "My gosh, what, what society we're having today." So I'll have a great, safe Thanksgiving, and thank you for the opportunity to, you know, we have to chat with you all. And call us anytime. Call me 24/7.
You can't do this in Charleston.
I've heard enough of that.
You can't do this in Charleston. Thank you very much, thank you. One last, I got a couple of comments. I've heard enough of the whole council. All right, uh, Michael, great job. You exceeded expectations I don't want to ask you to do. Um, you came out with some new insights. Um, we've talked about it for about six months. We've been working on this. Fine job. Um, congratulations to the police department, 12 in a row. That's awesome. I can't wait to see that room completed that way. That'll look good as tile wall right there. That would be awesome. Um, codified, we are being codified by January. We will have our final, um, draft for the codification of the ordinances, then we will look at codification of our charter. Animal Care and Control, nice job. I know how long it took. Um, I am a member of that. Um, I went to all those meetings, had very long discussions, and, um, we're going to get this passed right. There's just very small, little minor details at this point. We'll take care of that. Um, churches, I'm going to invite the churches, this is a public announcement. We are looking at having a, in Jabon Park, Christmas trees. We're inviting every church to participate. Um, at this point, I'll even open it up, uh, to all the churches in Upshur County. Um, contact the mayor's office. We have a two-and-a-half-foot round planter that we've been using out on the corners. You may recognize them as the, as the, uh, terracotta colored. They're about three foot wide and about two and a half, three foot, um, tall. It'll fit a tree stand. You don't have to use a real tree. You can use one-year-old artificial trees from a church that's been sticking in a corner somewhere and they always use. Anyway, we're inviting the churches come down and have a decoration and put down at Jabon Park. Those planters will be there. You pick your planter, it is the first come first served. Um, I want everyone, oh, here's something interesting. Hunters, it's fixing to be timed. Bull hunters, is there right now?
Yeah.
You have, and these guns are coming up?
Bundy.
All right. Hunters, hunters, get around the, the county line or right up at the county border, or anywhere where you can hunt and kill some deer coming off the hill into College Avenue and down by the park. Do it. If somebody wants an urban deer hunt, let's stop that by killing them before they come across the border. Sorry to sound like Trump, but we got to...
Can they do that?
Oh, yeah, they can do that.
So hunters, do that. Please have a safe Thanksgiving. Thank you all for being here.
Have your license.
And come, come to the American Legion Building on the 23rd for a hunter's breakfast.